Just a reminder, we need to have this meeting concluded by six P M. due to, I believe it's township elections tonight. So, we have the minutes to last meeting before you. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve?
Thank you. We have a motion by Julie, second by Mari to approve the minutes as presented. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have a green agenda before us. There's no other changes or additions.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you, Mike. Do we have a second?
Second. Oh, go ahead.
We have a second by Mari. Any discussion, question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We do not have celebrations or community reports this evening. We'll move on to superintendent's report and calendar.
Thanks, Nicole. As shared previously, in that we go over every meeting, our enrollment report, we are currently at one thousand six hundred ninety students. From where we started the school year in October, our highest student count was one thousand seven hundred thirteen. So, we've had a range of about twenty-three students in our district, give or take. Last year, throughout the totality of the school year, our, our range was twenty-five students. One thing to note is, we are currently forty students fewer today than we were a year ago this time. That obviously has implications in different areas of operations with our school district. And, one of the things, that's why I include the range when I provide these reports to you, so that you can see from where our highest number was to where our lowest is, our range of students is approximately the same throughout the school year as things ebb and flow. But comparatively to a year ago, we are down that number of students.
And we do track that.
Correct.
You know, and we, we track the go- comings and goings. We track the reasons why. I mean, do we do an in- entrance, an exit, exit, you know, questionnaire or anything?
Sometimes we don't have the opportunity to do that.
Sure, sure. No, and I understand that. And that's, that's anybody's right to say no too, but just curious.
When we can, we do.
Okay, thank you.
When we can, we do. Moving on to buildings and grounds updates, I met with Director of Buildings and Grounds Tyler Garrison last week as part of our monthly meetings to get updates on different projects throughout our school district. The softball fieldhouse, Cardinal Park Fieldhouse project is near completion. Last Thursday, they did the initial walkthrough. There are a few plumbing things that need to be tied up, but that is near completion and will hopefully be operational by the time our first contests take place there. Additionally, at that facility, we'll be adding internet access, which has not been fed that far on district property, as well as updating the lighting to the field on the varsity field there. We moved forward on the K-two East Playground project. We'll use some remaining S R three funds. Just a reminder, those funds have to be obligated by September thirtieth of twenty-four and spent by November thirtieth of twenty-four. And we're on pace to spend the totality of our Finance Code one sixty funds. We're still working to, to find some areas for our Finance Code one sixty-one funds. There are different levels of restrictions on those, those different funding codes. One of, another positive is we found some ways to spend some of our food service reserve, which has been a challenge over the years. We'll be replacing the kettles in our kitchens. That is a project that is currently in process. We're also researching the purchase of a new trailer for the school district. Our band in performing arts programs have typically, or have had a trailer over the years. It's outdated and much heavier than a newer, modern trailer. And to be in, in compliance, we need to start pursuing that project. So Tyler is also leading that, and that is in, in progress as well. That could also be used for other functions within the school district as needed. Lastly, at the elementary here, we're replacing our hot water storage tanks. That project is a result of discovering a leak in the previous system that is sometimes concealed with insulation. We were lucky, we found it in time. There was a temporary fix applied until the new multi-tank system can be in place. One additional thing with facilities is, we just recently met, actually yesterday, with Facility Services Specialists from the South Central Service Cooperative to look at different facility needs, both current and future throughout the school district. And we have taken some initial steps to assess our ongoing facility needs. So, we will likely be embarking in the near future, taking a closer look at that, planning for future maintenance projects. We know we have some air handlers that need to be replaced at the junior, senior high school, as well as potential for continued growth and expansion as we look at our facilities to meet the needs of our students and programs that we're currently running in Aspire for areas of growth. I included a blurb of the Achievement and Integration Plan that is on the agenda for your approval tonight. Just a reminder, I can, well, I can speak more to that, I guess, when it comes up on the discussion portion of that. At the end of this week, I'll be attending the, the M A S A Spring Conference in Minneapolis. And then our next board meeting is two weeks from today, March twenty-sixth, right here in the Bud Room.
Right, thank you. Any questions for Superintendent Treidel? All right, we will move on to financial business. Dan?
First, we have a donation that has been offered, and it's in Appendix A, as provided for in Minnesota State statutes. I would move that we accept the donation from Ted Lobato of a violin valued at five hundred dollars for the school orchestra program, with the thanks to Mr. Lobato. I move that we accept that gift.
I'll second him.
I think we have a motion by Dan and a second by Julie. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Jen?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Mike?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mari?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. And thank you to Mr. Lobato for that donation to our music program. Financials? Jessica?
Yes, so you have in front of you the bills from tonight, and then also February twenty-ninth, two thousand four, single check run, and then the wires and transfers. Wires and transfers are larger because we have payroll items on there, but nothing abnormal on the wires and transfers on the bills for tonight. I just wanted to point out that we have the check two crest for the down payment of the tilting kettle at the elementary school that Superintendent had referred to in his report. And again, that's part of our food service excess fund balance. And then there is also a payment to ByteSpeed for some laptops and other supplies, and that is for our robotics and STEM lab that is paid for with Esser and Schmekley dollars. Do you have any other questions?
If there are no other questions, I will make a motion to approve the wire transfers for February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four to March sixth, two thousand twenty-four, the February twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four, single checks, and payment of the March twelfth, two thousand twenty-four bills.
Thank you. Is there a second? Motion by Julie, second by Mari to approve the financial information as presented this evening. Is there any question or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have no old business, so we are going to move on to new business. We have with us this evening Rhonda Eastland to discuss the Open Door Health Clinic.
Thank you. I'm excited to be here tonight. This has been a year in the making, so it's been fun working with your school district for the past year. I thought I'd start a little bit with some history what Open Door is. So, we're a community health center that receives funding from the federal government to serve people who don't have insurance, are on medical assistance, Medicare, or have private insurance. We primarily see oral health population. About seventy-five percent of our patients come in for dental visits. It's our largest driver. We do have a very robust medical and behavioral health line, but there seems to be more of a need for dental services in the Mankato region. We are part of a national movement, so there's about a thousand five hundred community health centers across the country, and they serve about thirty million people. It's a very large movement. It has bipartisan support from our legislators and senators. There isn't really been a risk in my fifteen years working in the health center movement of not having funding coming our way. So, we do feel blessed for that, that we continue to get the support from the government to do the services that we provide for the community. It'll talk a little bit about the partnership with Fairmont. So, this is truly a partnership. This isn't an open door clinic that can stand alone and do whatever we want to do in your school district. It's really working with an advisory board that we're excited to get back up and going again if we move forward tonight. We worked a little bit last spring on working on some ideas, but it's really us working in partnership. We, we come in, as we know, a little bit of the medical piece. We're hoping all of the advisory members from the school know the parents, the community, and really help us design services that meet the needs of your school district. We're not here to interrupt your services. We really want to work in partnership. So, we're very excited about that. We envision it'll be medical, behavioral health, and dental, all starting at the same time this July. We've been planning for a year now, so we're ready to do all three services at the same time. So, we would have one medical provider to start with that would be on site about thirty-two hours, and then they would have some admin time and some lunch hour in between there. So, we're hoping maybe seven-thirty to three every day of the week, with one day would be only four hours. And then the dental would be, we have a mobile bus that's almost ready to move back from Ohio, so it's been getting repaired for the last year, that has three dental operatories inside it. So, we would have a dental hygienist and a dentist working in the bus, probably starting two days a week and then growing the capacity. And our behavioral health services mainly would be virtual to start with, and we do have a psychologist who could come on site to help at the school a few days a month. So, that's the service line that we'd be starting with. I think, again, to remember, there's going to be a lot of work between now and the beginning of school year to really plan what does this look like. There has to be some workflow issues. I think we've, we're excited to be in the elementary school. It makes it a little bit easier for accessing parents to have the children come in for the services. We really will have to have forms filled out. We'll have to connect with the parents. So, we're using an online tool that will allow us to text a family to fill out forms and approve consent for care if we already don't have forms on file from them from the beginning of the year. So, we're excited about that. That's new for Open Door. We're going to actually use it in our main clinic also, so we're going to start trialing it there in a few months, which will allow people to check in from the parking lot, go right into our lobby, and not have to sit at our front desk at all. So, we're super excited about bringing in some new technology. I, that's, ask me some questions, maybe. That's all I really have.
Well, in our oper-, as Rhonda alluded to, we've had the privilege of having many conversations on this topic over the last year and a half. A couple, some of you of board members have been a part of conversations, whether it be by committee or other pieces. So, there's varying levels of understanding, but as she alluded to, the operational pieces that need to be figured out. When people, if people were to, pending your approval tonight, and we move forward and people are coming to the Open Door Clinic within our elementary school, it isn't an open-flow access to the building. People would still have to check in at the main office as they would if they were coming for any other business within the school district, as they do at both buildings. And I know that's something I've talked to, began talking to our, our elementary principals about as just a, a first point of contact, like how's that going to look? How's that going to work? Those are details. So, the M O, the memorandum of agreement that is in front of you is the agreement to move forward with some of the larger overarching commitments and legal legalities that are needed for a partnership like this. And then, as Rhonda alluded, we would bring in community partners, school district partners, to form that advisory committee to fine-tune the operational pieces of what, what this will look like moving forward, should you approve that memorandum of agreement for that. So, yeah, a lot of, as she's alluded to, we've been very patient in this process. There's a lot of excitement and urgency early on. And then, with, with your due diligence, some of the questions that you've asked as board members that we've gone back and forth with, pending grant opportunities that the Open Door Health Center was waiting on, we're at a point here, obviously, for you to consider approving, moving forward with this partnership. So, again, it's been, it's been a process. It's been a patient process. We've done our communicative due diligence in terms of making sure we weren't rushing into anything that either side wasn't prepared for. So, that's what's before you tonight, and wanted to fill a gap there so you could have some time to process and think of questions for those of you that haven't had the opportunity to ask. But Rhonda covered some of the, the overarching pieces, so.
So, the Open Door Clinic you mentioned, July first, would be opening. Is this going to be open July first, as in seeing patients July first? Or are we still going to be planning and getting things going and then going basically more full-scale when we have students in the building?
And going back to kind of that advisory committee, I think that's really going to be up to the advisory committee. There's a lot of moving pieces with that starting date. I will have to put in something to the federal government saying we're putting in a scope change, and we have a hundred and ninety days to open the clinic. So, I will put that in as we get through some of this advisory, and we know we're close to that opening date. So, it's not set in the stone. Like, we're not going to have something starting July first. I really think we have to talk a little bit more, work through some things.
I'm just trying to clarify for the community, and so I just, you know, I don't want anybody to think they're standing on the door July first, waiting for the doors to open. So, you know, just so we know, July first is, is the planned date of where we're going to be hitting the ground, but we're not necessarily taking full service at, at that time.
Yeah, and I think we'll have a lot of, the committee will mark it, will share. People will know well ahead of time when they can call to schedule an appointment. But I agree, wouldn't expect necessarily to see something July first.
Okay, thank you.
So, is this open for anyone to call and make an appointment, or is it just for school staff?
That'll again be the committee, but I would suggest, and I think we're kind of on the same page, is it really should start with students. Let's start with the students. Let's see what happens, and then we can grow each year. I think that's how most of the school-based health centers in Minnesota start.
I know when we had some of the planning meetings, that's what we had talked about, is basically school services and that. Because of kids not, you know, one, can't even get hold of a parent to get them to, you know, services, especially dental services and that is very, you know, hard to get into and that. Also, you know, like I said, just getting your kids to be seen sometimes, behavioral health is very important for all people. And there are two, it's, you know, there again, it's, it's not a free service too. It's, it's, yeah, it's reduced in fees and that, but there's also paperwork and that, that if there is insurance coverage and that, that we, you know, can work on that too. So, there's a lot of different steps, I believe, that we had talked about.
Yeah, and if someone calls and they're not a student, their family, we still have services at our other sites, and so we'll refer them there, and they can get seen there if they need to be seen. So, it's not that we would turn anyone away. We just wouldn't be inviting them into the school.
One question that I had a parent ask me is, what is, what would be the difference between what the Open Door Clinic would do and what the school nurse that we already have does? What, what would be your kind of division of duties? Who would be doing what and such?
I mean, I think we have to work through that, but there's a pretty good list from the Minnesota School-Based Health Services. I mean, we're, our practitioner is a full-licensed provider. They can do diagnosis, treatment, prescribe medication. A school nurse cannot do all of those pieces.
For example, if a student had a sore throat, diagnosis strep, the Open Door Health Clinic could prescribe antibiotics for that. It'd be like going somewhere else. I think it's important to note that the intention of this is to serve our students. Number one. Number two, that no student will be seen without parental consent.
Correct.
And, I mean, those are, to me, the, the big factors here. And we won't have people just wandering in our halls, waiting to be seen in the clinic, because its intention is to be for our students. And, I think that's probably was, were, those were my main concerns.
Yeah, if you think about male, we're like a male. We do the same services they do. We have to follow the same rules or consent that they follow. And we're not, I just, I don't think it would be beneficial to the school to have people coming in, waiting for appointments. Maybe for dental, as it's parked outside and there's access issues in the summer, maybe we have people coming for dental services, but they won't have to go through the school, because that is such a need in this community, regardless of your age, to get access to dental care. That's going to take a couple of years. We don't have enough dentists to do everything we'd want to do to provide all that access. We probably have a dentist who can come one day a week at this point. They're very hard to find and hire right now.
You had said that the intent is that students, faculty, staff would have, that's who would be served first. And then you'd mentioned like the advisory committee. The contract doesn't say that, though, so do we need to change the contract?
I don't think so. I mean, it's really clear. We could write it in, but it's pretty clear to us all that's what we're doing. I, I'm not going to open, I don't have capacity to have more people come in. One nurse practitioner can see six to seven people. There is not a lot of room with the staffing that we're putting in here, but whatever you're comfortable with, I think we should write that into the MOU.
When it says families, what does that mean to you?
To me, it's the, I hope the families are coming in with the students. If we're doing a well-child checkup, I want a family in there. If both the mother, the daughter, they all have strep, let's get antibiotics for that whole family if they're right there together. That's kind of what I'm envisioning.
I, I'm not comfortable with the definitions in the MOU. I, I'm comfortable with the goal.
Yeah.
But from professional experience, when things don't follow what you intend them to do, you go back and look at what you wrote down, and definitions are very important. And so I can envision very easily a number of situations where this could go unintentionally askew for a variety of reasons. I'd feel more comfortable if we locked that in, you know, what's the expectation? It says families, does that include aunts and uncles that are caregivers but not technically custodial caregivers? I think it's fair for us to say, students, that's easy, staff, that's easy. That's defined by, by those words. Families is not well-defined, and I don't want families to have this expectation that they have access to this when they don't. But, and I think the aunt and uncle or grandma and grandpa is the perfect example, where they are currently caring for the child, but on paper, they're not, and while they're watching the kid now because mom and dad are gone, they want to come in, oh, like you said, this is for families, and we're telling them, no. Now we have people upset at us because it sounds like we're doing something different that we just talked about we're trying to do. So in order to avoid that opportunity for misunderstanding, I think we should be not relying on a future undetermined committee to set protocols and definitions of who and priority, but we should probably have that, from my perspective, sketched out ahead of time. But I don't think not moving forward is necessary to fix that, but, and that's just me, I don't, everyone else doesn't have to agree with me, I just, I don't like that the broad terms that are in here because of the reasons I mentioned.
I'll make a motion to approve the open, the memorandum of understanding from, between Fairmont Area Schools and Open Door Health Clinic Center, Community Center, so.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Dan. Any further discussion or questions? I have a question. So with Mike's concerns, you, you have clinics and schools elsewhere.
We don't have any right now, we are starting one in Mankato Public Schools, and we are starting one in Eastern Harbor. And this is the MOU we're using with all of them, they've all looked at it.
Okay.
And we just, the timeliness, we just had an unnamed additional school district reach out to us today to gather information in our processes. School district in the, I would say, in the region that would be more similar in size or even slightly smaller than, than our school district, that's also looking at adding this service in collaboration with Open Door Health Center.
I may know the district, but I'm not going to name them either.
Yeah, yeah, but, no, because, you know, obviously, that's to flesh out, and we, in our conversations too, our goal of this, just to note, hasn't it been to compete with services locally, but to, to fill a gap that's there for, for many of our students and, and families that we currently see in our schools. And that's why we, we will have local providers on that advisory committee as a collaborative, as a part of that.
And we had Mayo as part of our planning committee as well, so it's not like it was done, or, you know, I mean, we, we were very open and, you know, trying to see, and we know there's a need. And, and I think you're right, Superintendent Tredo, that we're going to see more and more schools see this as a need ongoing in the, in the communities and in the, you know, in the towns and that. You just don't have that, and where we're seeing some places are closing, small town clinics and that, and so for them, kids in the school districts, this may be their only opportunity, so, no, I, I think it's very important.
I think you're right to bring up Mayo is, this is not the same, I mean, this is intended to be providing to people that aren't already being provided by Mayo, that's why they are, I'm not going to speak for them.
No, because they said that there was, they knew that there was a need
Yep.
that, that definitely was in our schools, kids that could not be seen, you know, not just for Mayo, but, but there again, with the other clinics and that in Fairmont as well, or our neighboring towns, because, I mean, people come from all over to Mayo or, or to Fairmont to get healthcare services, and so, I mean, this is just, it will, it'll help take some of that bind off of the system.
Yeah, our board chair works at Mayo, they're very supportive of this movement, connected us with regional people. Amy Long's no longer here, so we've got connected with the new person who replaced her, so I think there's a lot of partnership with Mayo that'll be involved with this.
I think it's also important to note that the employees of the actual clinic will be the employees of Open Door Health Clinic, so malpractice issues, things like that, HIPAA issues, all of that is run with people who are experienced in healthcare and have those resources available to them. All right, we have a motion, a second. Do we have any further discussion or questions?
I'm going to, on discussion, final point, I'm going to trust that we will address some of the concerns I raised before we open, so that we aren't missile, misaligning expectations. There's plenty of time to get that done, it's not super hard stuff, but I, I, I want to, it sounds like I'm not supportive of it when I raise concerns, and I'm trying not to give that impression, but I think we have time to, would you agree, there's plenty of time to maybe narrow that down?
And I would just add too, like, our, the school district's legal team has taken a first glance at this too, and as we go through that process, we can make amendments to the memorandum of agreement, that can come before the board at a future date, so we can initiate the process and move forward with starting things.
They might not even need to get in there and looking at it, so I'm not changing my position on concerns, I'm going to support it, I just make sure that we follow up on that.
Okay, any other concerns, questions, discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, thank you, thank you Rhonda, very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have before us, item B, policies.
We met on February 20th to review more policies. We made some revisions to policy 104, you can see that in appendix D, or appendix C, sorry. And then we are going to rescind one of the other policies, policy 535.1. So I motion to approve revising policy 104 and repealing policy 535.1.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Jen, second by Mike, regarding policy 104 and 535.1. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. We have achievement intervention plan, which is appendix D1 in your packet. Dan, I believe you were going to present with that?
Based on district enrollment data submitted in the fall of 2022, we've been asked to submit an achievement and integration plan to the Minnesota Department of Education under Minnesota's School Desegregation and Integration Rules, which are explained somewhat in appendix D1. We are asked to participate in this A and I program and develop a plan to increase racial and economic integration and reduce any achievement disparities that may be present. Reducing achievement disparities for specific student groups and increasing integration is the purpose of the program. Fairmont schools qualified for this program due to the fact that the district-wide enrollment of protected students is more than 20 percentage points higher than enrollment in any of our adjoining school districts. The protected students are defined in the groups of African-American, Asian, Pacific-American, Latino, American Indian, and multiracial. Districts receiving funding to implement the strategies in their plans at a rate of 70% state aid and 30% local levy. So I would move to approve the application of Fairmont Area Schools for the achievement and intervention plan as is required.
Second.
Second. Thank you, we have a motion by Dan, second by Julie, to approve the school district's achievement and intervention plan as presented.
Andy, are we required to do this, or are we being asked to do it?
Yeah, the state, we've been working with Vanessa Mo at the Department of Education, what, yes, we need to do it.
Yeah, we have to do it.
Yeah.
It's asking is a nice way of saying you have to do it.
Right. They notified us a little over a year ago, and March 15th is the deadline to submit the application, we'll get feedback. We're in the process of solidifying a partner school that has to be in adjacent district. The unique aspect of that is two of the three of our adjacent districts are already a part of an achievement integration cohort, leaving the remaining district that we're still working with to work out that plan, and what the integration with that district and different activities will look like. So our plan is for Fairmont Area Schools, due to different timing constraints and things, we'll continue to work with the Department of Education to add that partner school, and they have some different options in the event there are any roadblocks in that process, but, and then the, the funding piece of it, Jessica's done a great job of looking into some of the questions there. That shows up on a future, when we get our multi, you know, 100-page levy report every year, there is a line for achievement and integration and the revenue that's generated there. Again, as noted, 70% of that is state aid, 30% is local levy. So that'll come in a future, it'll show up on our FY25 levy report, I believe, is that correct, Jessica? Yep.
Okay, we had a motion, a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Employment, Mike?
We have two employee, or well, one employee and one, we have to approve the athletic coaches, so I'll make a motion to accept the employment of Grace Myers as a long-term substitute floating teacher, salary BA step one. That would be effective going back to March 4th, 2024, through June 3rd, 2024. And additionally, I would make a motion, in that same motion, that we approve the spring athletic coaches roster, which is in the appendix E. It looks like Mr. Mahoney was able to fill all those slots, we should approve that, so I made that motion.
Second. Thank you, we have a motion by Mike, second by Mari, for the employment items on the agenda. Any discussion?
It's very exciting to see a lot of recent former graduates coming back to help out in the various programs, it's very nice to see.
Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Resignations, we have two, I'll present that. We have Dick Carter, an elementary evening custodian effective March 1st, 2024, and Bryce Allard, STEM egg teacher effective March 28th, 2024.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion by myself, second by Julie. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to board committee reports, SDCC, we met on March 5th, and the, I believe, almost the entire meeting was spent discussing the letters and REDACT requirements that we have now from the state. It's teacher training that is very specific as, as, as to content, and also very specific as to blocks of time in which it must be implemented, and so there was a lot of talk about, about that and how next year's calendar and schedule might be reflected with that, and with deadlines from the state, and really, they're still having the presenters approved for that, so the whole state, we're not alone in this, in our district of trying to figure out what it is that we need to be doing and when we need to do it. So we have two or two and a half years to implement this, and.
So are we planning on working with other districts and kind of, you know, with our neighboring districts, because everybody's, has to do this, correct?
It's, yeah, each individual district has to do it, and there's some unique caveats to the training, where when you're trained in one district, for some reason, it doesn't transfer to another. So it's, the training has to be done within your district. There, there are some pilot schools that have started the letters training adjacent to the REDACT, but there are currently seven, I think the last report we got was there are 17,000 applications into the state because it's by site and by school, and they're still working to approve the vendor contracts, as Nicole alluded to, so we are still moving forward with our, our school calendar, planning for additional professional development time to be embedded for our staff that needs to be trained in Phase 1, which is, in summary, our elementary staff and teachers of students receiving special education services and other academic supports, and then there's a Phase 2 that wraps in other education professionals, secondary ELA teachers, I think, are required in Phase 2 as part of that. And so we're in a unique timing frame where we're trying to make decisions on our calendar and how we're going to implement professional development for our staff, while still waiting for these vendor contracts to be approved for the training with the letters training.
But our, our school's not unique, the entire state is in the same situation of trying to figure out calendaring and scheduling, and, I mean, really, it is time for us to approve our calendar for next year, and some districts do it multiple years and it's supposed to one year, so everyone's kind of in the same boat, and that's why we're hoping that the state is somewhat flexible in allowing us two and a half years instead of two years, but we'll find out, so.
Correct.
Anyway, any other questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, motion by Mike, second by Julie, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, motion carries.